Evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 4th meeting in the New Bern Planning and Zoning Board meeting. Seth, can we get a roll call?
Yes, sir. Brad Jefferson?
Here.
Travis Oakley?
Here.
Raymond Lathan?
Here.
Marjorie Dunn?
Here.
Marshall Bowden. Pat Doherty?
Here.
Sunny Louza?
Here.
Kyle Deering?
Here.
And Marshall Bowden is here. All right, we've got a call.
Before we start the meeting, I think our lovely city attorney over there is gonna talk about the election of the new officers.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Oakley, members of the Planning and Zoning Board. Good evening. One of the first orders of business that you have tonight are to elect your officers. This is a order, several terms were pointed at the last session of the New Bern Board of Alderman, and our code ordinances requires that the Planning and Zoning Board have both a chair and a vice chair. Our rules indicate that both the chair and the vice chair must be residents of the City of New Bern, so bear that in mind as you make your nominations. But before we get into that discussion, it might be appropriate, since there's some new faces around the table, for the three new members to introduce themselves. I know, Kyle, this is not your first meeting, but since this is the opportunity where we're introducing people, maybe we could start with Mr. Bowden, and then move around the table in a clockwise motion with the new members introducing themselves.
Okay.
My name is Marshall Bowden. I served on the board for five years, and I'm back again. I'm happy to be back. I still always will be your faces when I was here before. Okay, so pleasure to be back.
Pleasure to be back.
Mr. Jennings.
Brad Jefferson, recently appointed, New Bern resident, lifelong New Bernian, looking to get involved with the city government, and this is open, and so here, looking very forward to it.
Kyle Deering, this is my second meeting here, learning a lot already. Some of you may know me from the American Legion Post 539. I was previously the service officer. I recently resigned my position. I'm glad that someone has a little bit more time on their hands, because that was really hard to do. Looking forward to, already learned a lot, and going to learn more, and really get involved in what the city government's all about.
Very good. Thank you all for volunteering your time and being here and being a part of this very, very important board. And now it is your prerogative to elect your officers. So let's begin with chair. If anyone is interested in making a nomination, you may submit your nomination on the floor at this time.
I'll give my nomination of Travis Oakley for chairman.
Second.
Mr. Oakley, would you accept that nomination?
I would be happy to.
Any other nominations?
We need a vice chair.
Seeing none, there is a nomination and a second, all in favor of Travis Oakley serving as chair of the New Bern Planning and Zoning Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, Mr. Oakley.
Thank you.
And, sir, you would like to lead the nominations for vice chair.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to nominate Mr. Raymond Lathan for the vice.
My second pick.
Aye, sir.
Would you like to call for a vote, Seth?
Yes, can we have a roll call on that, Seth?
Yes, sir. Brad Jefferson?
Yes.
Travis Oakley?
Yes.
Raymond Lathan?
Yes.
Pat Doherty?
Yes.
Sunny Louza?
Yes.
Kyle Deering?
Yes.
Marshall Bowden?
Here.
Motion passes.
All right, very much. Now that we have tackled that, I'd like to move on to the new business. Item A, we have Owen Williams has requested consideration of an application to rezone one parcel of land totaling 0.92 acres from C4 neighborhood business to C3 commercial district. The parcel is located at the New School Boulevard, or, excuse me, on New School Boulevard just north of its intersection with Midian Avenue. The property is further ID is PID 8-243-070. Seth, can we get a staff overview?
Yes, sir, thank you. Again, Owen Williams has applied here, as many of y'all may recall, he came before this for a few months back, or, beginning an adjacent piece of land, also to C3, with his intention to build storage units on the total of this property at some point. Background of this property is the long-term commercial uses. Existing structure, built 1971, classified as office according to tax. Tax records is currently a retail tire store and service center. You probably familiar with the site. The existing zoning is C4, which is a neighborhood business district established with principal use of land used for buying and retail goods services to nearby residents. Proposing the C3 commercial district, which has been established for office and personal services and retailing and durable convenience goods. District chairman located on city's major regular roads. General survey of use is allowed in C3, and you're probably pretty familiar with all of these. Surrounding zoning to the north is C4 neighborhood business. South, it's an adjacent piece, something like that, C3 now. East is bound by New School Boulevard, a big track across the road to C3. Beyond the right way, and west is an existing overland park, it's R6. City of New Bern utilities are available. Land use plans show the subject is developed with a mix of residential and commercial uses, known of environmental hazards on the property. New School Boulevard is classified as a principal archerial. According to the NC floodplain mapping program, the property is not located in a 100-year or 500-year floodplain. Proposed rezoning of the subject property to C3 is consistent with the character of adjacent land use. It's out, owned by the applicant, recently rezoned to C3, as well as commercial zoning classifications to the north and east across New School Boulevard. Adjacent overland park to the west will be busy to any commercial development scenario by ordinance and through the site planning development process. Staff found the proposed rezoning to be in the public interest and consistent with the city land use and transportation plans. The parcel already being commercial use, and it might already suit with residential development. Staff's got no objection to the proposal. Any questions that anybody's got?
Thank you, Seth. Are there any questions at this time from any members of the board?
So Seth, we are, this proposed use is 10.201, is that correct? Storage within completely enclosed structures?
That's what you asked before, yeah. And that's what, of course, anything in C3 would be allowed, of course.
Yeah. Well, the only reason I ask is as long as there's not storage outside, that would require special use, but as long as it's all inside, it's a requirement by rights.
Yeah, what he has expressed intent for is mini storage.
Okay.
This time, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who would like to make a comment on this particular proposal? All right, seeing none, at this time, I'd like to take a vote.
I have a move that we approve this, or we recommend the approval of the, this parcel.
I have a move?
From C4 to C3?
I have a motion to approve the request. Is there a second, Seth? All right, a motion and a second. Seth, can we get a roll call?
Yes, sir. Brad Jefferson?
Yes.
Travis Oakley?
Yes.
Raymond Lathan?
Yes.
Pat Doherty?
Yes.
Sunny Louza?
Yes.
Kyle Deering?
Yes.
And Marshall Bowden?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. All right, we're gonna move on to item B under new business. The City of New Bern has requested consideration of an application to rezone two parcels of land totaling 4.139 acres. Split zone C3 commercial and R6 residential to entirely C3 commercial district. The parcels are located off Broad Street and Third Avenue. The property is further identified as PID 8-012-119 and 8-012-110. Seth, can we get a staff overview?
Absolutely, thank you, sir. So a little background, this is the property for the future site of the Stanley Recreation Center, White Recreation Center. Up until last week, this site was made up of just about three dozen smaller parcels that have been recombined into these two parcel numbers, and the parcel, or the property was given overall ID as a 601 Third Avenue last week, so did all the new numbers. So again, the overall site's 4.41 acres, and it's got a history of mixture of residential and commercial uses. During the site right now, it's vacant, but two land structures that will either be relocated. It's put a aerial, a 2021 aerial. It's gonna be, it's this parcel here, which is labeled as Track 2 in the tax maps, and all of this, which is Track 1. Got an aerial view here, looking back towards Broad Street. This is where the restaurant was, formerly. So the existing areas shown in blue here are the existing R6 residential district. It has a specific intent to encourage continued use of land for residential purposes, single to family, multifamily, and 6,000 square foot lots. Certain compatible non-residential uses. Proposing, the city is proposing C3 commercial district, which allows for office and personal services, and weekend and durable convenience goods, being generally located on the city's major regular roads. In this case, one of the permitted uses within C3 is indoor athletic and exercise facilities, which is the intent for the Stanley White Recreation Center.
Seth, I have a quick question, but I didn't mean to put you off. If you, can you go back, can you go back to the actual aerial there? Is that including the area of that house that they were trying to move at the?
Yeah, that's why I said how to include, they've been trying to.
The Black Swan House? I've called it that, I can't remember the exact name of it, but yeah. So that includes that area as well?
Yes, sir. Last I heard, there was someone that was interested in taking the house, but I'm not sure where that's coming from. It's kind of a difficult process to have.
Sure.
Suppose there's a reason that's not highlighted on this map? That house and the old restaurant, then?
Yeah, well, we put that map together, it's just a show the area that needs to be rezoned, but it's still included, that's existing C3.
That's already C3, that's right.
Okay.
Doesn't require resuming for what the city is requesting.
Awesome, yeah. All right, Seth, you can go ahead. Thank you for answering.
Again, to the north, there's a park up there, Outdoor Recreation, R6. South, we've got New Bern Fire Rescue headquarters, and they contracted them to C3. To the east, there's some commercial offices, known as C3, and some different residential R6. To the west, there's an office building, but many stores in the back, and there's a daycare center, out to the north of that, to the R6. City of New Bern utilities available. So the land use plan has the subject property shown as developed, with a mix of residential and commercial uses, known of hazards, environmental hazards on the property. Broad Street's classified as a principal archerial. Gaston Boulevard and Third Avenue classified as local streets according to ACDFT functional classification. According to the NC floodmap program, Track 1 is not located within a 100-year or 500-year floodplains, a portion of the north and east section of Track 2 is located in a 500-year floodplain, which is a near-hold risk area. The proposed rezoning of the subject property is C3 commercial district, consistent with the character of adjacent land uses. South and east along Broad Street, staff's found the proposed rezoning to be in the public interest and consistent with city land use and transportation plans. Again, the purpose of the rezoning is to facilitate the construction of a public recreation facility, and social improvements. The planning staff has no objection to the request. Anybody have any questions?
And hearing no questions or comments from the board, is anybody here from the public that has any questions regarding this item on the agenda?
There's a chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For the houses, like, that you just asked?
Yes, sir.
It's a daycare center on Gaston. What are they gonna do at that daycare center? Are they gonna?
That's outside the area, it's everything on this side.
Yeah, it'll be just, just behind that, it won't affect the daycare center.
They won't, okay.
That's right.
Yeah, not, that parcel is not included in the resuming request.
See, those are, those are.
So there's the daycare center over there.
Are there any other questions? Yes, sir.
With the big house, have they, has everyone, do they have a taker?
Seth was just saying that there, one person has shown interest, and we're not sure where they're at in that process. I think everybody's kinda waiting to see what pans out with that, so.
It's empty down there, isn't it?
It is empty right now.
How are they gonna move, with the wires and everything? They don't have to.
Yeah, it's, it's a logistical challenge to move it, I mean, it can be moved, but.
It's only money, Marshall.
Yeah, exactly.
It only takes money, you can move it.
Pay it with gold, Marshall.
Marshall, you know, the Macy's Parade, they move all the, all the Tupperlains, right? Definitely.
No, I think, I think the intent is, is to try to save the house and.
Beautiful house.
Being the challenge of being to find another property that's suitable.
Right.
With, you know, a path of route for distance, I guess, to maybe get it to that spot.
Yeah, exactly, I don't think you'd wanna cart that across town.
You gotta build a foundation, and so it's wild and just cool.
Yes, sir. Are there any other comments or questions about this item on the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the parcel, the two parcels, the total 4.139 acres to C3, as submitted in the application.
I have a motion in a second, Seth, can we get a roll call?
Yes, sir. Brad Jefferson?
Yes.
Travis Oakley?
Yes.
Raymond Lathan?
Yes.
Patrick Doherty?
Yes.
Sunny Louza?
Yes.
Kyle Deering?
Yes.
Marshall Bowden?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
All right.
How is this from the original building that's replacing?
About 600, what was it?
600 feet.
Yeah, 600 feet, it's, it's close.
Surprisingly, how close is to the existing Stanley White Recreation Center?
Just off the map there.
Yeah.
Just off of the case.
All right, moving on to item C under new business. Color Farms LLC has requested consideration of an application to rezone seven parcels of land totaling 413.3 acres from A5F, R10, and R10A to R6. The parcel are located off Trent Creek Road. The property is further identified as PID 8-210-11002, 11003, 11004, 11006, 11009, 11010, and 23000. Seth, can we get a staff overview?
Thank you, sir. So the, sort of the site is a mixture of agriculture and forested land, presently forested. It's got a photograph here at the back, Craver Forest, looking toward the entrance for the majority of the property. You see the multiple parcels here, coming down to Trent Creek Road. Existing zonings are A5, A5F, and agriculture districts designed to promote agriculture, forestry operations, so allow for low-density, single-family development on five-acre lot minimum. R10 residential district designed to accommodate single and two-family homes of 10,000 square foot lots against 5,000 each additional multifamily. Proposed rezoning to R6 district designed to accommodate single-family, two-family, multifamily, allowing 6,000 square foot minimum lots for one zoning unit and 2,000 square foot for each additional unit with multifamily. General uses in R6 allow single-family, two-family, duplex, multifamily, churches, nurse care institutions, emergency services, very little in the way of anything beyond residential allowed in R6. To the north, you've got agricultural forested areas, A5F. To the south, same uses, R20, A5F, and C3. To the east, forested A5F and existing residential, R6. To the, to the west, more of the same, A5, R20, A5F. City of New Bern utilities are available on the site. The 2022 updated land use plan has the subject parcels located in the MLK Boulevard focus area for future growth, as well as opportunities to be, with a future extension of NC43 adjacent to these properties. Dr. MLK Boulevard's classified as a, excuse me, a principal archerial. Trent Creek Road and Suboi Drive are classified as local streets according to NCDFT functional classification. The site will have funding on the future NC43 extension. According to the regional land use plan, the subject property has areas of new suitability for development, there are known of environmental hazards on the property. According to the NC floodplain mapping program, none of the subject parcels are located within 100-year or 500-year floodplain. Proposed rezoning of the subject property to R6 residential district is consistent with the character of the surrounding land uses previously developed by the applicant. Staff's found the proposed rezoning to be in the public interest and consistent with city land use plan, not being located within MLK Boulevard focus area, for future growth, as well as opportunities to be. Staff's got no objection to the request.
Thank you, Seth. At this time, sir, I know you're here to talk a little bit about this, so I'm gonna afford you the opportunity first, and then if the board members have any questions, we can, we can ask you, but if you're good with that. If you'd like to address the board, you don't have to.
I'd love to.
Okay, great.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, come on in.
Thanks for having me, guys. Well, first of all, my name's Patrick, I've been, I'm from New Bern, I'm a local boy, actually, I used to serve on this board from about 2010 to 2015, 2016. And I've been a developer and a builder for many, many years. And then when we started the Craver Forest Development, was back in 2006. And after getting into business for about 30 years at that point, and learning how to do things the wrong way, I spent a lot of time with the planning and zoning staff, 2006, 2007, to come up with a neighborhood concept that was, to create a walkable community of people. And with the houses close to the street, it sounds kinda strange, but with sidewalks, all the front porches on the front, it really turned out to be a very good idea. And it's been very well received. Craver Forest phases 1 and 2, got about a combination of about 300 homes. And interesting thing is, it took 14 years to build that thing out, with a strong PLA in place. It's probably one of the best-looking neighborhoods around, because I took the time and had the vision to plan early with a strong PLA, and keep the same theme. And, you know, we've got very, very strong curb appeal still, and our home values have been stable, and it's been increasing. And, now with regards to the bigger picture, of course, it's no secret that 43 is coming through. And about right here where the F is, there's gonna be a full crossover intersection. And, you know, for me, it's about protecting my vision. You know, I'm not gonna be here forever. Actually, I'm not here right now, I live in the Philippines, so I pop in about every three months and check on things, but things are going well, but I know there's coming a day that, you know, somebody's gonna wanna pick up those commercial corners at that intersection and do something. That's outside of my vision. My vision is, did everybody get a chance to read the article?
I did, yeah.
Well, and that's the whole thing, it's more of the same, we've got works, and let's just keep on going with it. And somebody said, well, you know, what about all that, you know, on the west side? And I think it's a lot of grabs. And most of it is, doesn't have, well, it can't get utilities back there, you know, from about here, but someday they will. And for it to turn into something with the big boxes or whatever, that would just, that would not be a good legacy to leave behind. And so for me, it's very, very important, go ahead and, zone it all the same classification. That way, if the big box comes in 10 years from now, five years from now, my residents, by the way, this is Joyce and Alice, you know, they're two of Craver Forest residents, and they'd like to speak after me, if that's okay.
Sure.
But, yeah, it's to, you know, protect the future, and protect the values. And so when, when that big box comes up before this board, before there's on an application, they've got to basically get everybody else on board that's already R6, because they've gotta change it from R6 to.
Right.
A different zone. It's a lot, you know, it'd be easy for them, relatively easy for them to change a agriculture. So, you know, that's the motive for, I'm gonna go ahead and get it all done at one time. We've got phases 3 and 4 that are pretty much ready to go. Phase 3's got, you'll probably see them at the next year, two years, 300 homes. We do have adequate loggers who are, all the offsite infrastructures in phase 2. Right here, that would be the entrance to what would be phase 3. Anyway, that's not topic for tonight, but anyway, that's, that's more of the same, 300 blocks. And then the, the next phase would be phase 4 over here, of more of the same. So anyhow, without beating that to death, that's why I'm here, and that's what I'm asking for.
Great.
And one might ask, well, why are you worried about this in here? Well, they're all contiguous, and we've got our North Carolina Department of Transportation trying to buy everything up. And anyway, they're not being real friendly with their interests. Well, their offers have been very disappointing at A5F, and I don't mind them, them folks trying to steal mine. And this is about the only chance I got to, well, have a fair crack at getting something for this land in here. So with that, made it simple to ask for, well, all of the Color Farms property, rezone Bar 6, you know, may help me with DOD, may not, but at least I know these folks are protected at this time. So with that, I'll allow them to speak, and then.
Give me, give me one second, I know we had some, the Marshall's got.
Yeah, I would just like to say, it's a very beautiful community. Miss Ray Berlin?
Yes.
It's a beautiful, I live in that community.
You do?
I'm from Rockland, yes.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Thank you.
How many additional homes are you planning on building?
Well, the.
When I first started, I used to come in from New York, I used to see the sign, $139,000, and I thought that was a steal.
It was.
It was, $149,000.
I think things have kind of changed over 40 years.
So how many additional structures or homes that you?
Well, they can get, we've got sewer and water and sewer and infrastructure in place for 300, now being phase 3.
Mm-hmm.
And then phase 4 could be another 300, but that'll pretty much cap it out. Well, we've already got 300 in there, so basically, what you see here, which is 300 lots, would just be copy, paste, copy, paste. And then the next point is ingress and egress, access and egress. From here, this would be a signalized intersection, Suboi Drive, which was, now that called a little street, but I've built it as, sort of as a collateral. a little steep, but I've built it as, served as a collector. And Savoy goes all the way up here, and ultimately, there'll be a crossover here. So that will allow us to copy, paste, copy, paste, and have two ways and a two-way valve. How long will that take? Probably not an hour like that. But I want to make sure it stays consistent, while, while it's working.
So sir, you think you're going to be breaking ground on phase three after the connector is built?
Right, that's a great question.
Yeah.
We would have broke ground in 2018. Then at that time, you know, I've, I've, well, I've been waiting on 43 since 2000, year 2000. I didn't believe it. But anyway, they, they've come to me four different times, talking about buying, buying, actually had us reserve that land, and then not come. And in 2018, we were ready to, just to, that's, I asked, that's used for that property was just to extend Trent Creek Road two lane, right on up to the end to the road and nowhere. That's it, we're done, we've done the 43, but.
So good. Well, I'm a Realtor, my wife and I, and I think the job is done with the Craver Forest is admirable. I think she's finished real nice job. I drove through it, I know it pretty well, but I drove through it today just to look and see where are they going to put, you know, and I've wondered about 43, and I've watched the delays, not as long as you have, but I've watched them since I'm here since 2012. But the only question I have about R6 is, R6 can be also, we can put in mobile homes, right? I think that's what it says.
Do you have a wise?
Right, so that's my only, not concern. My mother lived in a mobile home for 35 years after my dad died, and he was a contractor and never wanted to buy a house. This beautiful house is always rented, the minute she did, when he died, within a month, she called me from college, and when I was in college, and she said, I just bought a mobile home. She has beautiful mobile homes, she bought it. But I know we have some in Trent Creek, I've sold some of them, very nice people, and majority, vast majority, made things beautifully. But you're going to be doing single family, mostly homes off here with the R6?
Yeah, that would be the plan, is to do more of the same with Arcadia, not Arcadia, but Craver Forest, to copy, paste. But back on the train of thought, to answer your question of why, why didn't we start it earlier? With 2018, when they came to me, that's when they come up with a new plan and said, we're building it. So then we've, we've had to set it on the back burner ever since 2018.
Right, you know, it is.
So anyhow, but with regards to mobile homes, I'm not aware of that being a part of the, but.
R6, you can, right?
Can they allow for a Class A mobile home, which has to come in two pieces and be a minimum of 20 feet wide? I'd want to protect against that.
That's my only question. And I'm not, is not trying to be, come down on mobile homes, because that's happened to my mom, like, many years, I sold it, but she passed, I got 10 times what she paid for it.
So maybe another good point to remember, this is a resuming request, so any further developments would likely come before us at the pod.
Right, right, but sometimes we don't have a cha, a choice later on, we can't stop, we can't take a builder, this has happened before in discussions, so I'm trying to tell the builder what they can and cannot do.
Yeah.
I know they can't, once it's zoned, we can't, right? But I, I, gentleman is definitely experienced and built a beautiful subdivision already, I'm not worried about it. Thank you, sir.
But I appreciate what you're saying, and, you know, maybe some other mechanism, like the restriction or something, if I can be able to help with that.
Any other questions from the developer? All right, at this time, folks, did you, would you like to address?
Do you need my name or anything, or address?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, we're Alan, A-L-A-N, and Joyce Snow, S-N-O-W, as in winter. One reason we live here, we escape the winter from the north. 10 years ago, when we built our house on Bundelup Drive, we were the first home on Bundelup Drive in Craver Forest. And I would say the community's probably doubled in size in the last 10 years. Does that sound about right? So we've seen a lot of construction and development in our time there, it's all very orderly, very well managed. We are definitely beneficiaries of Patrick's vision, and would love to see that continue over time, as he described. We serve on the POA board in Craver Forest, and not because of that, but we find it continues to be a really well managed, well maintained community, and we're excited to see that continue. And maybe a bit of an ulterior motive, we have a few family members who plan to retire in New Bern at some point, would likely be building in the new phases here, so we look forward to that as well.
Great.
So that's who we are and why we're here, and hopefully they'll all approve it and we'll continue the march.
All right, well, we appreciate you guys taking the time to turn around and talk to us.
Thank you.
At this point in time, if there's no more questions or concerns from the board, I'd like to ask if, if we can get a motion. Oh.
Is your motion to recommend to the board of Alderman?
This has a recommendation for Alderman, right?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
That's your motion?
As the plan is approved, approved as planned as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second? No second. I have a motion and a second, Seth, can we get a roll call?
Brad Jefferson?
Yes.
Travis Oakley?
Yes.
Raymond Layton?
Yes.
Pat Doherty?
Yes.
Samuel Uzo?
Yes.
Kyle Deering?
Yes.
Marshall Bowler?
Yes.
Motion is presented.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
Appreciate it. All right, that is all the items for new business. If there is nothing else from the board, or our city attorney, or development services, ask somebody to make that motion to adjourn the meeting?
So.
All right, I have a motion and a second?
Is it second?
Second. Motion and a second, Seth, roll call.
Brad Jefferson?
Yes.
Travis Oakley?
Yes.
Raymond Layton?
Yes.
Patrick Doherty?
Yes.
Samuel Uzo?
Yes.
Kyle Deering?
Yes.
Marshall Bowler?
Yes.
Motion to approve your return.